Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Special Meeting for Monday, April 26, 2021. This meeting has been posted in accordance with open meeting laws. I would like to introduce our newest board members before we get started here, who was sworn in prior to this meeting tonight. Christopher Carnes, he's with the K, he prefers Christopher. Christopher Wright, and he prefers Chris. And we have Elizabeth Wyman, and she prefers Beth. Welcome aboard, everybody, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
At this time, I will call the roll. Carlin?
President.
Herzog?
Here.
Carnes?
Here.
Peschall?
Here.
Solaji?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
Wyman?
Here.
We have a form. The first agenda item is election of officers. Please remember, a majority, which is four votes, is needed for a member to get voted in. There can also be no discussion at this time, only nominees are taken per the board policy. I would like to read that, what we have here. Election of officers shall be by voice or ballot after nomination from the floor and shall require a majority of voting members in attendance. Secret ballots may be utilized only for election of officers. Where no such majority exists on the first vote, a second vote shall be cast for the two candidates who receive the greatest number of votes. Does the board desire to vote by roll call or ballot tonight?
I would prefer ballot.
Second that. Ballot. Ballot it is. Nominations are now in order for the Office of President of the Board of Education.
I nominate Bob Peschall.
I nominate Beth Wyman.
Are there any further nominations? If not, nominations are now closed. We will present ballots. Please use ballot one, President, that we are handing out. Please fold them in half, just once. Okay, I have one vote for Bob Peschall. I have one vote for Bob Peschall. I have another vote for Bob Peschall. I have one vote for Beth Wyman. I have one vote for Bob Peschall. I have one vote for Beth Wyman. And I have one vote for Bob Peschall. Congratulations, Bob Peschall is the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education President for the 2021-22 school year.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Bob.
Thanks.
At this time, Bob gets to take over the meeting here.
All right.
Have a little temporary floor.
Sure. So I will now take nominations for Vice President of the Board.
Aye.
I nominate Barb Herzog.
Okay.
That's what I was gonna say.
Any other requests for nominations for Vice President of the Board?
I nominate myself.
Okay. Do you handle all that then too, or?
Yep. I can do ballot, and hand out ballots again.
So if it's the preference of the Board to do a ballot vote again, we will consider in that direction?
I support that.
Say thank you all in half one time.
Thank you.
I have one vote for Barb Herzog. I have one vote for Beth Wyman. And I have one vote for Barb Herzog.
So congratulations, Barb Herzog, you are now considered the Vice President of the Board of Education.
Thank you.
All right, hold on one second, please. So now, we will take nominations for any, I can do it in any order, or?
Treasurer.
Treasurer, okay. Oh, right here, got it. Take nominations for Treasurer of the Board.
I nominate Liz Solaji.
Okay.
Second that.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Treasurer? Seeing none. Okay, I feel that those nominations are closed. I feel confident that we could do this by a voice vote. Is that something that we want to do?
Well, there's only one nomination, so.
Sure, okay. So please call the roll.
Yeah. Carlin?
Hi.
Herzog?
Hi.
Carnes?
Hi.
Peschall?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Aye, Sabbath, motion carries.
All right, now we will be opening up nominations for Clerk of the Board.
I nominate Stephanie Carlin.
Okay. Any other nominations for Clerk of the Board?
I nominate Beth Wyman.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Carol.
I have one vote for Stephanie Carlin. One vote for Beth Wyman. One vote for Beth Wyman. One vote for Beth Wyman. Congratulations.
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 Beth Wyman is now the Clerk of the Board. All right. Now, if I remember correctly, Secretary Deputy Clerk is always considered you, correct? All right, so I would like to nominate Jackie Jasak?
Jasak.
Jasak. Sorry, thank you. For the Secretary and Deputy Clerk of the Board.
Second that.
Roll call vote.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Aye, Sabbath, motion carries.
All right. All right, give me a second to get myself here. All right, so we've now, I have on my, on my agenda here that typically, we also spend some time assigning seats and everything in regards to that, because the President and Vice President typically are at the head of the, the head of the room. So my thought on determining seating assignments was just to go by seniority. So, so at that point, the next person with the longest tenure on the Board is Ms. Carlin. So Ms. Carlin, you have the ability to choose to either keep the seat that you have, or choose the seat that Liz has.
Barb?
The Vice President.
Barb's over there.
I got it.
Or one of these.
I'll take Christopher Carnes' seat for next time. Are we gonna move now, or should we?
You can move now. We'll, we'll do that assigning, and then Barb and I will move when that's done, so.
Need to wipe anything down?
Yep, so Liz, Ms. Solaji, where would you like to be?
Yeah, I'll take your seat.
Okay.
I'll be at the end.
Makes it easy, I definitely have to move now.
I feel like we should wipe things down. Right, you have a seat at the table.
So I guess my question to the, to the new members of the Board is, are these the seats that you wish to have, or do you guys wanna do some musical chairs some more?
I'm fine with sitting wherever.
Okay.
Completely fine.
This is Wyman?
No difference to me.
Okay, Mr. Carnes? All right, then consider ourselves sat and ready to move forward.
I like this view.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
All right, so next we're on to the Consent Resolution Agenda. For the Consent Agenda, the Board has been furnished the background material on each of these items and have discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a Board Member wants to discuss any item, it will be polled out of the Consent Agenda and voted on separately. So I just wanna, wanna hit that home one more time, that if you wish to talk or speak on any of these items, you have to pull that item to be discussed separately than the rest of the items on the, on the Consent Agenda. So is there anyone that would like to pull anything? Okay, I wanted to actually pull number two, because I wanted to discuss some elements of it, so. So we'll pull that one. And then what we have left is, the Board will consider the approval of the authorization of signatures on checks. So I'm looking for a motion to, motion to move the Consent Agenda, just number one.
I'll move that.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Herzog, seconded by Carlin. All right. Is, there can't be any discussion, so. All right, call, call for a vote.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Consent Agenda carries.
All right. So now I am looking for a motion for number two, adopt rules, regulations, and policies.
So, second.
Moved by Herzog, seconded by Solaji. All right. Does anyone have any discussion on this, other than myself? So, all right, so the reason why I asked for this to be polled is that, if you looked at the agenda in preparing for the meeting, there wasn't anything behind this, this item. And so I just kinda wanted to talk about it, it's in the essence of that, it's a little bit of formality that we do. We have Board Rules, Policies, actually, we have, I haven't technically found Rules, but I have found Policies. And so, and when you go into the Board Docs, you can find that the section of four zeros is the section that has all the Board Policies in it. And so essentially, our action tonight is to, is to move forward with reapproving those and following these. If anyone wants to come back to, to look at those policies and to maybe revisit them, we do that through the Policy and Governance Committee, of which we'll talk about a little bit, in a, in a little bit as well. So I do want you guys to know that I am, I haven't talked to Sherry about this yet, but I am gonna seek to have a binder made up of all the Board Policies, so that, so that every member has a binder of our Board Policies, and that they're easy for you to find, kind of on a moment's notice. They're all online and everything too, but, but I think it might be, might be good for the Board just to have those in a, in a physical form. So that'll be a request that I, that I make, that everyone get that packet.
Hang on, I have a question.
Yes.
Peschall. When you say Board Policies, we have, I believe there are ten series, so there's the 1,000, 2,000s, up to, I believe, the 9,000s.
Sure.
Are you asking for all of those, or are you asking for those that are technically called bylaws?
I'm asking for the ones that are technically called bylaws at this point.
Just wanted to clarify.
So, thank you. So, any other questions related to that? Vicki, did you have any concerns with providing that as a, as a tool?
No.
Dr. Cartwright, sorry.
That's okay. No, there's no concerns in that, just wanna make sure the Board Members are aware that with the Board, the online policies, that they are searchable, and sometimes you will find policies in different series that you may not have thought about previously. So just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that search feature.
All right, thank you. All right, if there's no other discussion on number two, I will, we can, we can make a, we can vote on it. Sorry.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Consent Resolution carries.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is to, is to appoint members to Board Committees and to review committee structure, so. I did, I kinda wanted to read the wording on the Standing Board Committees and Appointments, because it kinda defines how we choose the person who is considered the Chair of that Committee and the Vice Chair of that Committee, so. And so this is Policy 0155.1, called Standing Board Committees and Appointments. Each Standing Board Committee includes up to three Board Members. The President of the Board shall ask members for the preferred committee assignments, and then make appointments. The first person named by the President to serve on the Committee shall serve as the Chairperson, with the second name assuming such responsibilities in his or her absence. Each Committee will have a specific job description detailing the duties of the Committee. These appointments are typically done at this meeting, and shall be made no later than the first Board Meeting after the election of the Board Officers. So, and I think we're good. Get my bearings here. So what I'm gonna just do, does, does everyone kind of want a description of each Board, of each Board Committee, or do all members feel comfortable with the, with how the Board, what the Boards are defined as? Good?
Yeah, I feel pretty comfortable.
Okay, all right.
Same here.
Okay. All right, so then we will seek for appointments to the Policy and Governance Committee. So is there anyone who would like to, looking for three members of the Board to, to volunteer for that Committee?
I can continue on that Committee. I have been on it, this is my third year now on the Board, and this, I would be on it the third time in a row, but I have enjoyed it. So I can even volunteer to chair that, if that helps, but I would need a strong Vice Chair.
We will consider Liz to be the Chair at this point.
Thanks. I took the quietness as maybe, that was okay if I volunteered.
Any, any of the new members? So one of the things that I find about the Policy Committee, and it's similar to the Facilities and Finance Committee too, is that you know a lot of what's going on when you're preparing for agendas, because sometimes we spend two, three meetings going through a policy for it to actually get to a Board Meeting, and then when, by the time you get to a Board Meeting, you've, you know what's taking place, especially in regards to the Consent Agenda. So it gives you a lot of upfront knowledge about what policies guide the District as well, so.
Yes, it is really, I found it to be a really helpful way to learn about how the School District functions and.
You know, I've taken a break from Policy for a couple of years now, so I think I'd like to vice-chair that with Liz.
Okay. Looking for one more person. It is, it's a three-member, it's a three-member Board.
I would be willing to serve if you're looking for a third there.
All right, so those members are Liz Solaji, Stephanie Carlin, and Barb Herzog. All right, Facilities and Finance is a three-member Board as well. In this Board, you learn a lot about the Facilities and Finance, the direction of the District, that the District is taking in those areas, and you get to work, in all these Committees, you work hand-in-hand with staff to, to create that direction, so. So taking suggestions of people that would like to be on that one.
I'd like to be on that.
Okay.
If there is an opening, I'd like to be on it.
Okay, one more.
I'd be willing to chair that, because I've attended, I think, all the meetings over the last three years, so there would be some continuity moving forward.
All right, Barb will be the Chair, Beth will be the Vice Chair, and Chris, you will be the regular member. All right, the next will be the Administrator Compensation Committee. This one, my name's on it, but I've actually never, I don't think I've ever had to meet in this Committee, so. But basically what they do is they, they go over, they review Administrator Compensation. It meets maybe once or twice a year, if that, at this point, so. Any nominees for that?
If you're looking for, I'd be happy to be on the Committee.
So it does, it does look like we're looking for three people, so.
I'd volunteer for that.
Okay.
I would as well.
All right. So Beth is the Chair, Barb is the Vice Chair, and Christopher is the regular member. All right. The next is the Education Committee, will be looking for three members as well on this one. So this one spends a lot of time going over the curriculum that is introduced into all of the levels of, of education of our District. So historically, Liz has been, been on this Committee, I think you've chaired it the last couple of years.
I have, yep.
So, so do you want to continue to be on that Committee, or?
I would love to continue being on it, I can Vice Chair if someone else would like to chair.
Sure.
Yeah, this is where my heart is, right?
Yeah.
In the curriculum.
So there's an opportunity for?
I would be interested.
Okay.
I would also be interested.
Okay. So Christopher, I'll make you the Chair. And Liz, you will be the Vice Chair.
Yes, I can help support him and get him going.
And Beth, you will just be a, a member. All right, Energy and Management Committee, it meets, it goes over all the energy and sustainability projects that the School District embark upon from year to year, and it meets about four times a year. It's usually at the Facilities Meeting, uh, Facilities Building on Self-Made, so. Stephanie, you've, do you have an interest in continuing on this one, or not?
I would love to stay on it as Vice Chair if somebody else has an appetite for becoming Chair.
I would be interested.
So Christopher will be the Chair. And Stephanie, you'll be the Vice. All right. Legislative Committee, this is one of our newer Committees, I think it's, it's just finished its first year inception. Mainly, this, the role of this Committee is to engage, is for Board Members to engage a little bit into the political process of getting our elected leaders that represent our areas into our schools, learning about what we do, working on getting their support when we go to referendum. There's a laundry list of, of why we think it's important to engage with our political leaders around us. So, and, and it's not only that, we spend a lot of time learning about what's going on at the Capitol in regards to legislation, and how that might affect us as well, so.
I would like to chair this Committee.
Okay. So.
I would, I would like to be on it if I could just be a regular member.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to be on that?
I'd be willing to co-chair that one. I, I get a lot of information through the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, which can be helpful of that. But I would also like to point out, Mr. Peschall, that any Board Member can attend any one of these Committees. They're open meetings, they're publicly noticed, so all seven of us could actually show up to any one of these meetings, but normally it's the Committee Members who show up, and then the Board President is considered ex officio, so by virtue of the office, the President may choose to attend.
Sure.
Or may not, depending on scheduling.
Would you like to chair Legislative Committee?
Not necessarily.
I really like the co-chair, that sounds.
I don't know if that's an option, but.
I don't know if it is or not, but.
I'm comfortable being the Vice Chair.
Co-chair. You said.
We better see how that policy's written.
So if it turns out that you guys wanna switch roles, we can have that discussion later.
Perfect, yeah.
All right, so right now, Stephanie, I'm gonna put you down as the Chair. And Barb, I'm gonna put you down as the Vice.
Thank you.
And then Christopher, you'll be the, the regular Board Member. So I, you'll see, I haven't necessarily put myself on any of these yet. So, I, you'll see, I haven't necessarily put myself on any of these yet. It's partially because I'm gonna be navigating the role of President at this point. Dr. Herzog has spent a lot of time coming to our committee meetings when she wasn't appointed to them as President, and I'm gonna do that to the best of my ability as well. But there'll be other elements that you see me sign up for that are, that are part of the presidential duties, so. So, don't think, don't think that I'm trying to, trying to cop out on you guys a little bit, make you guys do all the work, so.
I thought the President wasn't allowed to joint committees, no?
Tradition was.
Well, you're in every committee.
Yeah, traditionally, you're in every, you can be at, you can be at any, any of them.
Right.
So. All right, so, so those are our standing committees, and now we have advisory committees as well. The first one is, looks like the first and only one, is the Human and Growth Development. This, this goes over the curriculum that's utilized in the schools at the elementary, middle school, and high school level for discussing human growth and development in all those ages, so. Is there anyone that's interested?
I am.
All right.
Mr. Peschel, I believe that one typically only meets once, once a year. So, it's not a high time commitment with that one.
Now, you guys should know that there's also, in our, in our folder, there was also kind of a, a calendar of when the, when the committees meet and everything as well. Tells you the times and dates. And usually, they'll get scheduled. Sherry Wertz usually sends out the schedules and the agendas for all of these committees, so. All right. All right, moving on to number three of appointments, the Representative Delegates. So, we have CISA six. Dr. Herzog has historically represented us at CISA six for several years at this point. How are, how are your feelings about continuing?
I would be very happy to continue in that role. Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right, TIF Districts. I am gonna assume, I'm gonna assume that role as, as being the Chief Representative of the Board.
Excuse me if I just could interject there, Mr. Peschel. Historically and traditionally, the, the TIF District appointment is the Board President and then the Vice President. And the same would hold true for the City Planning Commission.
Okay. So, so to kind of give a background of what that committee is, is that, so, all the taxing entities that make up, that make up the TIFs, or that are part of the TIFs, they generally meet and discuss current TIFs that are going past the city, the Planning Commission, and the City Council to determine the benefits of that Tisk, that TIF as it relates to the city and the taxing entities, so. And there's usually, if I remember correctly, there's usually like a show of support as well that goes out as well.
I've attended those.
Doesn't make it out of those.
I've attended those the last couple of years. I don't recall that there was any rejected by the TIF Board. They sometimes call that the Joint Review Board. It's made up of the County Executive, the City Manager, someone representing Fox Valley Tech, and there's one more.
County.
Sorry, I can't remember. And then there's, there are employees from the city, from typically the Planning Commission, and they present the information, and then there's a vote as to whether or not the Joint Review Board wants to advance the proposal. As I said, they haven't rejected anything that I can recall in the last couple of years, but they could. But it's, it's an interesting entity.
All right. WASB Delegate Assembly. This position was previously held by Mr. Evans. He held it for several years, and he was always our, our delegate with WASB. They put on a, they put on a large conference every year, and they kind of have a legislative role in proporting a certain legislation going to the state and to the legislature and such. So, is there anyone that would like to fill Mr. Evans' shoes?
I would, unless Dr. Herzog. But you are President of WASB now, right?
No, I'm the first Vice President.
First, okay. So, you'll be the Delegate Assembly regardless, right?
I will. The, the time commitment there, if I could just.
Go for it.
Thank you, is, all districts in the state will have until about the middle of September to submit any items that they believe should be considered by all 421 public school districts in the state of Wisconsin. And each delegate or each district then has the responsibility of choosing a delegate. And there's another group called the Policy and Governance Committee of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, and they will take all those proposed resolutions, review them, not for their content or whether or not they like them, but are they worthy to go before the Delegate Assembly? So, for example, that group most recently has considered resolutions that would increase the amount of special education reimbursement to districts. They also considered a resolution which would have raised, I believe, the sales tax. That one happened to be rejected. So, your responsibility is to receive a packet of materials and then to, in December, this Board would, would give our delegate, in this case, Mrs. Carlin, direction as to how this Board wants our delegate to vote. And it's usually somewhere between maybe fifteen and twenty-five resolutions. And it usually takes place on a Wednesday at the convention, and it might last two to three hours. And then there's a preliminary meeting the night before, which might go an hour. So, your time at the convention is somewhat taken up, where you don't have the discretion of going to other sectionals that are going on. But then that's the end of your commitment.
Yeah, go ahead.
And also, just for informational, this Board, the Board of Education recently passed a very designated legislative platform. So, it has multiple points on there as to where the points of interest for the Board to utilize, and also be in the area for which there was, there was agreement amongst all Board members at that point in time on how to proceed on, on specific items that impact the district. In addition to that, not only do you have a, a full legislative platform, but there is also legislative priorities. So, for example, you typically, even though we have a, a larger platform that's out there, you typically will only choose between three to five priorities that you wanna focus on per school year. So, that is information also that's available on our website where you can locate additional information. We'll be more than happy to supply, administration will be more than happy to catch you up on that as well if you would like. But it does also help drive some of the work that the Legislative Committee does, as well as previously the items that we were bringing forward for this particular action.
You, is okay if I ask a question?
Go for it.
You said that the priorities are reviewed and determined annually? So, is that typically at the beginning of the school year, or? I'm assuming the Board prioritizes legislative, legislative needs in ones based on what's currently occurring within the district? So, we reset that then at the beginning of each school year, or who determines that?
Certainly. So, the legislative, the legislative platform is, is from, it was an analysis that was completed at that point in time for our district, and also knowing what was current actions that were occurring within the legislative, and historically, and what was predicted to go forward. So, there's a large platform with multiple priorities that are, that are listed out on there. And then the priority list is something absolutely, Mr. Wright, you want to establish on a yearly basis. And it's usually coming from that larger legislative platform in order to help drive the focus, the district on what are those priorities that we really wanna focus on for this, this upcoming school year.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, and a lot of that, a lot of that direction will come from the Legislative Committee as well. So, they'll, they'll communicate that to you when they're, when they're doing that reprioritizing.
Okay.
Or they'll communicate it to us as, as the Board. What we did in the last year is the Legislative Committee met a couple different times to create items that we wanted to kind of have in our platform and create priorities from. And then we had a couple high-level board workshops with everyone on the Board to kind of determine, you know, what we wanted to focus on, you know, for, for platform and priorities. And then it eventually came back through committee to the, to the Board to, to approve.
Have those initiatives been successful? I mean, because I'm all about it, but success is the end goal.
So, I guess in shaping the conversation for tonight, I am happy, and I think we are happy to talk about what's working and what's not working, about just doing that at the right time and place to doing that, so. I would say that, Mr. Wright, if you're, if you're interested in, in the legislative priorities, I'm willing to re-entertain, you know, your involvement on that committee as well, so that, you know, if you're interested in that, you know, we could have conversations with those that have already been appointed as well, so.
Okay.
Bob, I just wanted to say if Dr. Herzog would like to be WASB delegate, you are far more qualified than I am. But I know in years past, you haven't been able to do it because you were so heavily involved with WASB and you didn't have the time commitment. So, if you would like to be the WASB delegate, I would be more than happy to relinquish that. Cause you've had a conflict. Am I right about that?
That's right.
You were able to, while you were serving as President of WASB.
I'm, I'm, just a couple of points. The, because I'm a, because I serve on the WASB Board of Directors, I have a vote in addition to
Okay.
a delegate from this Board.
Oh, yeah, that's it, yeah.
So, if you asked me to serve for this Board, then we'd only have one vote. This way, we would have two. As the first Vice President of the WASB, I will actually be chairing that Delegate Assembly. So, I think it best that a person from this Board other than myself serve in that role, but thank you.
Can I say something? If you were interested in the Legislative Committee, if you wanted to think about that, I'd be willing to give my spot up if you wanted it. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Is that something you want to do now, or?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to replace Christopher with Chris on the Legislative Committee. All right. Any other questions related to the Legislative Committee or the WASB Delegate Assembly? All right, and moving on to the City Planning Commission. So, the City of Oshkosh has a Plan Commission that meets on Thursday after Thursday evenings, once a month, and then also has, it has kind of a business meeting, and then it has kind of a preparatory meeting as well and such. And I'm thoroughly excited for the opportunity to be, to be working with the Plan Commission, so. So, Barb, I, this one is one of those same committees as, same areas as well, where it's the President, Vice President, and then.
Traditionally, that's how it works.
Okay. So, we will continue in that fashion. I am looking for a, a second alternate. So, if there's anyone that's interested in how the city and the school district work together to create harmony in our, you know, in regards to planning and developing our community, this would be the spot to be in if, you know, and the chances are, you know, it's, it should be a second alternate, so it would have to be myself that wouldn't make it, or it would have to be Dr. Herzog that wouldn't be able to make it. But it's, it's one of the things that excites me the most, so. But, is there any other person?
I'd be very interested.
Okay. So, that'll be myself, Barb, and Beth. Okay? And it talks about some of my Board President responsibilities, serving on the Museum Board, the Fox Valley Tech College Board of Directors Selection Committee, Community Sounding Board, and Oshkosh for Education. I don't know if these are all up to date in regards to, to these, so, cause I haven't heard from the Community Sounding Board in a while. So, we would have to provide some update in regards to whether these, some of these organizations are still meeting regularly and are still wanting the involvement of the Board President.
I couldn't speak for the first three, and the answer is yes.
Okay.
The Community Sounding Board, I think, meets quarterly.
Okay.
Usually in the morning about 7:30, or maybe an hour.
And that's typically made up of a member of the university.
Yes.
A member of, I think it's the County Executive, a member of Fox Valley Tech, and
Mayor.
The Mayor.
City Manager.
City Manager.
The County Executive, Dr. Kurt Wright.
Okay.
And the Chamber.
And the Chamber, yeah.
I'm sorry, John Casper, yes.
Okay, any other questions about those responsibilities, my responsibilities? Okay? So, Negotiation Team, so these are the, these are the, the staff group, groupings that we have in regards to our staff that are unionized, I think, for the most part. And so, every so often, Mr. Nihans will have a request from one of these groups, or he'll request to meet with them to talk about some, I think, payment issue, payment increases, step increases, healthcare, all of these issues kind of relate to, in regards to their negotiations. You know, we play a role as Board members. We're not doing the negotiating. We're letting Drew and his team kind of negotiate that, but we provide direction. We're also there to observe the interactions that take place, and just being part of the team of supporting our staff that work in our district, so. So, the IOTC negotiations, IOTC is the, is the working group that covers all the stagehands and builds all the stages that we have for events that take place on school properties. So, I don't know what, if, I, I tend to like these things, so I don't know if you guys, I'm, I'm happy to still be in, in doing some of these if that's, if that's okay, so. But is there anyone who would be interested in, in being a liaison to the IOTC group? I guess I'll do it. I'll continue. That's an easy one. We haven't met. All right, you'll have to forgive me, cause I don't remember all the acronyms here. NTEA, that stands for?
Non Teaching Education Association.
Thank you.
That's essentially the custodial maintenance group. I think primarily, and also, I believe, the secretary.
Okay.
Personnel are included in there as well.
So, we have, we have two lines here, so for, we can have up to two people. I encourage you, I encourage any one of you to, to do these, because it gets you in contact with the pulse of the people that are doing the work around their buildings. Really, you really get to learn how they feel about how we treat them. They get to feel about the work that they do in the schools. They get to feel, you know, and they, and they provide, sometimes when you're sitting in that room, you, they provide you a whole bunch of history that you didn't, that you didn't have before, so. I really enjoy these negotiations, these meetings, when they take place. Also, I, also I think, I think Dr. Pinkston also takes part in these sometimes as well, so. I don't wanna leave, leave you out of that as well, so. So, Mr. Wright?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, talking to the custodians and.
All right. All right, anyone else?
I can be the alternate.
Okay. All right, next one is Oshkosh Educators Association.
This would be the teachers, media specialists, IST personnel, the tech coaches, and anyone who's, who actually has a title of teacher.
I don't think we had a meeting last year. Did we?
Drew is shaking his head yes.
Yes, we did, okay.
Mr. Nihans is, sorry.
I'll, I would be happy to serve on that one.
Okay.
How often do they meet? Or what's the guesstimate on how many times?
Once, maybe twice. Maybe.
Twice.
Maybe three times a year, so.
I'd be interested as well.
Mr. Nihans, how many times?
With the OEA group, we meet roughly monthly, earlier when I was with them.
Okay.
But, you do, you do, but the board doesn't necessarily.
Yeah.
I'm not sure on that.
So, so the board doesn't meet monthly with, with the, with the groups, they meet on a semi-regular basis.
Okay.
So, and it's usually, you'll get a call from Mr. Nihans or Dr. Pinkston to set up a time to meet with them, so. I think in my time doing, being on these negotiation committees, I think I've, I think there's been six times that I've met throughout my term with them, so. They work together, staff, administration, and, and teachers work together a lot without us, it's many times we, we kind of come in at the end of things just to kind of have a different eye on it and see if there's something different that, and we see that we don't want to miss out on, so. It's, like I said, it's a good experience, it doesn't take a lot of time.
If you need an alternate for that one.
Okay. All right, and OPEA, I believe that is the Oshkosh Pair Professionals Education Association? So, these are all kind of the support staff that we see in our schools, working with, with students of special needs and, and whatever else there may be.
I'd like to be part of that, thank you.
I'd be an alternate for that.
All right, sounds good. All right, that is all we have for the, for the committees, standing committees, advisory committees, delegates, and negotiation teams. So, the next item that we have on is a, is a workshop that is going to be led by Mr. James Macy and Mr. Jonathan Idan. They are going to give us kind of ins and outs of the legal process of what it means to be a board member.
I could just add, Mr. Peschel.
Sure.
Former Vice President Olmsted and I felt that one of the areas that we could improve as a board was on orientation of new members, and it's always good for returning members to hear some of the same information, so we worked to set up three meetings over the next three board meetings, starting with tonight, in which areas of interest and, and areas that the board members need to know could be addressed, and we'd all hear the same message at the same time. So, tonight we have the legal aspects. On Wednesday night, we have a session led by Doc, or Mr. Nitsky on effective, being an effective board member, so those two are coming up, and then on May 12th, we have an attorney coming in to talk about Robert's Rules as they apply with school boards. Most school boards don't follow Robert's Rules strictly as the probably five hundred page book you, page book you have in front of you would suggest, but, but loosely at least, school boards tend to follow Robert's Rules. So, those are three meetings coming up, and that's the background behind them. Thank you.
All right. Samman?
Very good, well, good evening. My name is Jim Macy, and John Idan is, is with me tonight, too, one of the other partners. We're with a law firm called Von Bresen &amp; Roper. If our local offices are in Nina, as you go down to the old Plexus Building off of Breeze Wood, we're up there, but we're really based out of Milwaukee. For those of you that don't know, it's a little under 200 lawyers altogether. One of the teams is the governmental group that works with the schools and the municipalities and the other aspects of that, and John and I are both, of course, in the school law team. Personally, I've been here since the early eighties, I started bargaining, collected bargaining agreements for one of the little school districts called Manawa before I finished law school, I've been doing that ever since, of course, that can, can change that, but working with school districts has been a mainstay of my practice for all of the years of doing that. In terms of who we represent in schools, it's all over the state, and the team is all over the state. Here, for example, like Appleton, Nina, Manasha, Oshkosh, we regularly do work with amongst quite a few others through the area here, at least through the local office as far as that goes. And the municipalities, it's the same kind of things, whether it be the city of Appleton, Otagami County, the city of Nina, the city of Manasha, the city of Oshkosh, the city of Fatale, Fatale County, all through again, there's lots of municipal work, and then the employment side of those things, too. Then we get to trouble you when there's really difficult problems going on. A few years ago, there were some really difficult political and employment issues up in Rhinelander, I'm not speaking at a school, it's public record, so was asked to come up and help with that, or our team was, and we're still helping a little bit up there. And more recently, one of the controversial things was, for those of you familiar with the Milwaukee area, in the fair mall, city of Walatosa, we had an officer involved in shooting, three shootings that resulted in the death of individuals, so I was asked to come down and work on that, as to what do you do in the employment setting with that, and so helped them, and we worked through that to resolve that. That's, like I say, I get to go through different parts of the states and do those kind of things. Personally, I live here in Oshkosh, I'm a taxpayer of Oshkosh, it's always nice to be at a local meeting, or I own that case, but it's nice to be home, and to be in the home district to, to do the kind of things, and get a chance to do that. John, a little background on this, start from your end.
Yeah, also from Oshkosh, graduated from West, have been practicing for over ten years, about half of that with Jim at Von Bresen, and I joined my temp at the firm in addition to working at, having the front in the problem solving, risk avoidance issue, conducting investigations, helping draft and enforce policies, also involved in the, the litigation side of things, so run successful, I'm going to a courtroom, working with administrative agency, working with the state and federal agencies, and doing jury trials and things like that, so, I joined the practice and really look forward to the district.
And we've been asked to come in and give you, you know, from a, a board member's point of view, what are some of the hot things to look out for? How can we help you stay out of trouble? And our goal, since we've been working with the district, is just that, is how do we overall avoid problems in litigation, and quite frankly, I'm pretty proud of the fact that this district has not been on the other side of major problems of liability and payouts and other kind of things. That doesn't just happen, that's good work by the board, that's good work by the administration, and that's getting some good defense and work as problems develop. It doesn't matter how big you are, when you're a multimillion dollar business like this, is you're going to inherit some issues once in a while, and the key is how do you deal with that? Part of that is how do you look out for things, especially when you're new or new to this, a veteran board member, who sort of is a refresher with those. How about some basics, John, just in terms of the setup of how the boards work and the organization of it?
Yeah, so the, the first conceptual idea that I'll, that'll help you understand the scope of the role is, starting with the board, I think everyone understands at the state and federal level, with the separation of the three branches of government, the legislative board drafting the law, the executives who are enforcing, and then judiciary for evaluating and resolving disputes or interpreting the plain language of the law. Everyone knows that when you're putting together a policy or statute, you're, you're incapable of addressing in the plain language of the, of the legislation, every potential variable and fact scenario, and that's where the judiciary comes in and applies fact-specific circumstances to the plain language of the policy or the law, and that's the interpretation piece. So, we have a similar structure, with just some different names at the federal and state level, but the overlap is what you hear about indecisions, or what you hear about reported most often in the media, when, when a branch of the government is exceeding their authority, it's in the judiciary of an activist judge who's going beyond the plain language of the statute and, and creating legislation through decision-making. So, I think everyone's familiar with, with the governmental structure, but Jim will talk about how the school district, and specifically the school board, that's into the operation.
It, it is just unique in terms of your roles as what you are, because it becomes more blurred. There are times where, as you're putting your committees together, you get the legislative folks that work on policy and deal with those kind of things. More often than not, your administration are going to be the executives, you're paying people money to run your business as far as that goes, but there are going to be times, and this is different for you in the public sector, for those of you that are new, because we have the constitutional overlay, and I'm going to come back to that later, that I don't have in the private sector, okay? So, we have certain due process aspects and other things where employees have some different rights that are really, really important, and again, I don't have that if I'm dealing in the private sector part of things. So, it's more blurred, there'll be times where you might be involved in evaluating your strength, it's discipline, or expelled, and it's a big deal, those are some of the hardest things you got to work on. You're like the judges then in that case, where you don't really want to be commenting on that while that's coming to you or pending, in fact, you shouldn't be at all, or, or a, a, a teacher's discipline kind of case, because you may have to hear that later, hear all the evidence, and then make a decision later. So, in that sense, you're, you're the judicial branch when you come to that. In schools, it's just a little bit, it's really different than the private sector, it's different than the state, and it's different than the federal aspects. I, I gotta say, one of the hardest things that board members tell me they wrestle with, and administrators tell me they wrestle with, is the distinction between being the policymaker and being the administrator as far as that goes, because some board members kind of cross the line, not that it would ever happen here, but cross the line, and they get a little bit too involved in running the business and wanting to administrate, making those kind of decisions. And I, that would never happen here either, but sometimes an administrator might decide, well, you know, I kind of want to get into the policy realm, and I'll decide the policy kind of issues, okay? Whether you have face-to-face school ongoing all the time, it's a little bit of a blur, but at the end of the day, it's kind of up to the board to determine the direction of all of that, and then the administration to administrate that part of it. More often than not, in a lot of the hiring decisions, a lot of the, even the discipline decisions, short determinations for the professional staff, are day-to-day operations that the administration is going to run, and you're not going to be involved in that so much from the board unless it comes to you later. So, there's a little bit of a definition up there of that, but if you can, if you could, if you want a mindset of what that is, you're like the board of directors, you set the operation, the policy of running the operation, and you delegate the actual day-to-day running to the group. It's not to say it's always that precise, but if that helps, that's kind of where you kind of want to be, and I know you're going to get more involved in that, I think, with Dr. Nitsky when he comes in to get through some of that, which would be good, but at least I thought we would start there. So, if we go on a little bit from there and talk about some of the other legal issues, what are some of the things you should talk about and be concerned about? In the public sector, a really, really important policy in this state is about clean and open government, and that flows through all of this kind of stuff. You cannot be more careful about being correct and right about open meeting law issues as far as that goes. So, let me start with that one, and we'll go through each one of these really quickly. But we talk about the open meetings, you know there's going to be a notice, you know there's going to be an agenda, you know that the business of the public has to take place in your meeting, it can't take place other places and then come into this aspect of things. So, you got to be careful as a board member when you're talking about things or engaged with other people about that, that's not to say you can't talk to people, it's not to say that you can't get opinions from people, it's not to say that you can't talk to each other, but once you start getting closer to discussions about forming a policy or a decision that would be made here, now you're into the trouble areas, because a key really important, Wisconsin was one of the first in the country to pass this kind of stuff, we're kind of proud of it, quite frankly, is about having this open meeting aspect. So, I'm going to ask John to talk about something. Let me tell you just a quick story of back when I was in high school, in Monomony Falls, this was in the newspaper, too, but the board was together because there was a vacancy on the board, and the board president was having an open house at their, at their house, little cocktail party, and they were talking about who they should appoint to the board at the meeting, about having cocktails. We're talking a long time ago, we're talking a long time ago. Well, the long and the short of it is that Lachisha Freeman sued the Monomony Falls School District and won, because they had discussed this policy issue about who they would appoint to the board. Now, the person they appointed wasn't there, wasn't part of the discussions, wasn't guilty of anything, but again, it wasn't at the meeting, and that's how my dad got on the school board in Monomony Falls, because they talked about him to be on the thing, and that was my first intro into the public meeting aspects of open meeting laws as far as that goes. So, John, I'm talking a little bit about what's called a walking forum, can you help us a little bit more through that, because, boy, this is a hot area you really want to look out for in your business here.
Yeah, so the, the walking forum is, is kind of the phrase that describes the discussion of governmental business that then leads to an express or tacit agreement to vote in a particular way, and those are the two essential elements of a walking forum that would violate the open meeting law. Again, it's discussing, engage in discussions regarding specific measure of government business, so an issue that would typically or otherwise come before the board on the agenda, and the discussions result in, or lead to, an explicit or tacit agreement to act in, in a certain way. So, you've essentially evaluated, discussed opinions, and reached a conclusion as to how you're going to vote on that issue outside of the context of the open meeting. So, if you, if you were to read the case law on this, which no one does unless they're forced to by their employer, but if you were to read the case law on this, a lot of the cases are born out of the optics of these discussions, and then you get into the specifics of what was exactly said, and oftentimes, the case is focused primarily on, well, what was the call, the call to action, or was there ultimately an agreement? Because there are so many circumstances in small communities where people are on boards, where they are friends, where they're living in a community, so as Jim said, the, the occasion for board members to discuss with either citizens or one another topics that may fall under their umbrella, it does happen, it can happen, but the key component and, and the, the line that you have to have in the back of your mind is when they, when the conversations become more than high level, they start to become substantive, you're starting to take evidence on issues. Someone who has a deep interest in the issue is, is coming to you and asking for your opinion, and there are other board members engaged in the discussion, and they're asking you to commit to an opinion or a viewpoint on an issue, and trying to, again, get everyone in agreement on how they're going to vote if this issue were to become in front of the board. So, the discussion of the topic itself is element number one, the line is then the discussion, and again, it doesn't have to be an explicit, a tacit agreement, everyone's standing around nodding their head yes, those are problematic facts, that would be challenging. So, that's the, that's how these cases are litigated, and again, I think avoiding all discussion of issues outside of the context of the meeting is challenging, but if you're aware of where the, the walking forum can be triggered, you can stop short of, of creating the optics that you're making these decisions outside of the, the public meeting. So, if we want to look at the, the hypothetical in the slide, you have a, a Facebook page, and you weigh in on a controversial topic, several other board members weigh in on their position on the topic, and the question is, have you engaged in a walking forum? So, as we just talked about with the essential elements, the first is whether or not the controversial topic is governmental business or something that's likely to come before the board. The second element of a walking forum is whether there's been any sort of explicit or tacit agreement. So, if the conversation is on governmental business, and if the board members in the comment section have all reached an agreement and expressed their, the way that they're going to handle the issue, then the answer would likely be yes. But again, there's a spectrum of risk when, whenever you're discussing issues that would otherwise come before the board, I think the best advice, and Jim would likely agree, is to keep those conversations extremely high level and be cautious of sharing any explicit opinions.
Absolutely. Do you have a question?
Can I ask you a question? Does it matter how many people are on the board and how many people were involved in it? So, if it was a seven-member board and only three, two or three people were doing that, does that still count? Or does it have to reach the majority to, to affect the decision?
It, it does matter, and it can be, but you can still have a minority vote or decision or tacit agreement, and what they, what they look at is, is it enough to effectuate policy of the board, okay? Enough people, it might be a, a minority of the board, but majority of a policy committee or some committee, with the committee then makes a recommendation, you may have a walking forum even though you got three, okay? So, it doesn't necessarily have to be, it's a factor.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Real quickly on the open meeting, and you're going to get more seminars, you're going to get more background, earlier tonight in your meeting, there were some discussions, and Mr. Peschel said, we'll come back to that, and we'll have that on another agenda, we'll talk about that. The lawyers in the background are going, all right, that's exactly. The reason is, is because your public sector meetings have to have an agenda, and you got to stay with that, you can't go off agenda, because that's not fair to the public, because they don't know what you're going to talk about. The idea is to be fair to the public, so they can be interested, so they can know, and not talk about things that are on there. One last thing on that side, open versus closed. It's an exception to be in closed session, because again, the policy is to be open. The statute gives us a very set list of times that we can be in. The statute gives us a very set list of times that we can be in closed session. The notice has to be more than just saying, we're citing that part of the statute. And then we got to state of that topic in it, okay? And I'm going to take minutes of that and there's limitations, we can vote, but there's limitations with that. All I'm saying is we are careful with closed sessions and it's not a given and it's not just automatic. There's got to be a very specific statutory reason to allow us to do that. The fact, there are going to be uncomfortable conversations we have and they're going to have to be open sometimes, okay? It's just the way it is because that's the public's business. And sometimes, oh, can we do this in close? No, sometimes not unless this meets those reasons, okay? That's the open meetings aspect of things. And again, you're going to get a lot more, but if I had to hit high points in terms of what to know, to look out for, it's within that. Let's go to another area. That's the public records law aspect of things, another big priority. The legislative group clearly said, and it's right in the statute, that a priority policy of this state is things are open. Things are going to be public records. What you write in your emails, what you text on your cellphone. If you have a personal email and use that and you're talking about school district business, that's a public record, okay? Just a heads up in terms of all of those things. And the policy of the state is even if there's a cellphone with hundreds or an email with hundreds of messages, we're going to have to sort through all of those, which is personal, which is school. I'm just saying, just a heads up in terms of be judicious with that because that's the law and that's, that's okay. It doesn't mean don't do it, just what you're doing.
Yeah. How does that relate to, say, social media? Is what we put on social media considered a public record at this point?
If you're doing, if you're on social media for the purposes of your board position and that's what you're talking about, yeah, you're creating public records in regards to that. And this, this gets to that a little bit for that reason, because of that. Because we don't always have that luxury. And when in doubt, the law's going to say, it's going to lean toward being the record kind of aspect of things. There are things we can exclude even though there are public record to keep confidential, but even that's an exception. And don't count on that. That's really an exception. So what you write, what you say, what you do consider, that's the, that's okay. That's the policy of the state, that's the way it should be. Keep in mind that that could very well, it's going to be a public record and it, it'll lean toward being disclosed, okay? Let me, let me just say that in regards to it. So deleting it, we got to be careful with that. And the district administration will tell you, you guys back up everything in terms of that. And then we have to keep things for a certain amount of time. People can request that and there's a process we go through, through with that, okay? But a heads up of that, especially with cellphones and social media and emails are huge in terms of that, okay? Quasi judicial issues, I've talked a little bit like before where you might be the judges. And you're, people are going to talk to you, people are going to tell you stuff. You're going to get used to as a board member, I think the veterans will agree with me on the boards of that, you'll shake your head and you'll do a lot of listening. And you're going to hesitate on weighing in too much of an opinion because you might have to hear it later. That's going to be tough, okay? But you'll be fine with it. The caution just is, learn to be a good listener, be judicious because there may be things like this scenario that may come to you. So it's no secret that we had a really traumatic, horrible event here a couple of years ago with, with the police officer and the student in the school. That eventually did go to a student discipline scenario and eventually did come back to the board after hearing officer heard that. There were so many different pieces to that. It's going to be a little frustrating because I hear this a lot from board members, that you're going to know a lot of stuff. And people are going to ask you a lot of stuff and you're going to get tested with saying, why aren't you doing this? And why aren't you doing that? And, and you're not going to be able to say what you'd really like to say. You're going to know as you're working on the committees, you're going to know from discussions in closed session of different investigations. The work that we do and we're involved in the community, been on boards with a number of you, we never talk about any of our client stuff. You will never hear any of that because we have ethics about that too and so do you in terms of your role. What you talk about in closed session, you may disagree like crazy, you may fight like crazy. And I don't mean that literally, but you, there's nothing wrong with it, they have differences of opinion. But when you leave that closed session, that's confidential. That's an oath that you took. That is really key. And if I, if John and I can keep you out of liability scenarios, let's just put that at the top of the list. Closed session discussions. Being friends of the media who say, I'll protect you as a source. Yeah, they may be able to protect you as a source, but if we have liability later, that goes right to the top of the list. And it's so hard. It's so hard that you'll be reading something and you're going to get asked up and you go, I'd love to tell you, I'd love to spend two hours with you, but my job and my oath to our constituents is that's, we can't do that. Aside from the oath, it's the liability though and that's where we come in on that. To best protect you, just, just hold tight. And if we need to talk about that, we do once in a while. Or we'll have issues come up that, is it a conflict? Is it a, what can we do about it? Will we help with that? You're not out there alone on any of this stuff, let's say that too.
And on the judicial piece, when you're, when these cases are for you, the decisions that you're making are based on the evidence that's presented to you in the hearing. Then that's how the foundation of the decision is drafted. That is what is a legally sound opinion. If you have an opinion that's based off evidence or things that you didn't have presented to you in front of the hearing, that, that's another problematic, I mean, that creates exposure as well. So it's another reason to limit the amount of discussion, but also the amount of independent research that you're doing on any issue that might come before you. Because your, your mindset needs to be focused on listening to the witness testimony and the individuals that are presenting evidence to you in the hearing.
Yeah, be careful to get pulled into an investigation where you're kind of doing your own investigation because some constituents ask you to do that. Work together as a group, work as a board or work with your administration. And then you have procedures that deal with those kind of things and they all do it, okay? That doesn't mean you can't be a good elected official, doesn't mean you can't ask questions. It doesn't mean that you can't take constituents' concerns very seriously and deal with those. Just use your processes as a board and kind of boards and run them, that way too. And that's easier said than done. I mentioned earlier the constitutional issue aspect of things. The administration is going to have the authority to hire and to remove support staff, okay? The custodial staff, the teacher aides, the other aspect, that's not going to come to you. That's an administrative function by law, okay? The professional staff, the teachers and the administrators, is a different statute under the law. And they contract with you as the board members. So your decisions to no longer contract, in this setting it's called a non-renewal under the statutes, that does come to you as far as that goes. So and it could come to you, and again, that judicial function. And we could be violating somebody's due process if this fact scenario would happen. And we comment to say, well, somebody's going to be gone or I'm going to work to have them gone. Well, you're not, you aren't going to be able to hear that case later. You're going to be violating somebody's due process rights because they have the right, just as you would want that right. If somebody was to remove you, you would want the right to have a fair group of people hear that later. If you prejudged it, if you commented and prejudged it, then we're not going to sit. Years ago, there was a controversy with the police chief over at Hortonville, if you remember this a few years back. And one of the police and fire commissioners had commented and was out at picketing and stuff that we shouldn't remove the chief. Well, the police and fire commissioner are the ones that hear the case. So that particular person who was an advocate and was really emotional about it, had to step off the police commission to hear that case because he got too caught up into it and prejudiced his case. Even if he said, well, I didn't really, I just got caught up into it, cats out of bag, you can't go back. Just as an example of what. Conflict of interest issues, these are always going to be up to you. We can advise you, we can tell you where we think the attorney general will be. We can tell you where some of the case law comes down. Some of it's black and white, some of it's a little gray. But it's, can be a problem for you as board members, so we raise it here. One is the 94613 statute. That has to do with your ability to contract individually. Let's say you've got a business and your business is going to do work with the school district, a tune of $15,000 or more, or $20,000 as this fact scenario suggests. That's a criminal penalty if we violate that one. So I want to list that one first. If we're involved in either our business contracting with the district or you're going to be sitting on the board and they're contracting and you're voting from the board side. So you're either writing the contract for your business coming in or you're on the board voting for this contract, stay away from that, okay? That's the statutory, that's the big one. We don't want to come close to that. We usually don't see that because people are pretty cautious of that when, when they start talking the penalties that go with that. The ethics aspect is a different statute altogether. And this has to go with clean government aspect of things. If we have a cocktail party down in Milwaukee at the WSB convention and we do, we don't raffle off TVs for you, we don't buy you expensive dinners and other people ought not be doing that either. The fact that you might be able to have a drink or two within a certain limit, $25, something like that, you're going to be okay. But in Wisconsin, we don't want our elected officials blocked. So things of value that you're doing or using your position to get something of value for you or your family, immediate family, that's the heads-up caution that goes with those kind of things, okay? And again, there'll be a lot more information about it, but it's just a heads up on that kind of stuff, okay? Incompatibility of offices is, is the idea of to what degree are you both a board member and an employee? You can't be both, okay? Example, board president, number of years ago up in Appleton, decided that the opening for the business manager was going to be coming open. And his business was downsizing, their family was selling that. So to what degree could he be the board president and be on the board and then also be the business manager for the school? Well, clearly he couldn't do both. But even with that, because the board's involved in it, he could not even apply for that position and be considered because of the influences of board member. He had to step off the board, apply for the position and then be considered for that. So depending on the position and the incompatibility of offices, that's a different policy having to do with a little bit of a conflict type of thing. To the degree that you have family members that work, we talk about what you can vote on and what you can't. You shouldn't be directly involved in their pay increases or benefit aspects of things. So we separate those kind of things.
And I, we had a training on this, this past week. And they said that if you have a family member within the district, you shouldn't even vote on disciplinary action if that could potentially result in your family member getting a more favorable position. They said you have to be extremely careful, extremely careful.
We're pretty conservative, as I can tell you, over that to protect you guys, to avoid those kind of things. And you just step out from the vote to avoid those kind of things. Let me go a little further because we work with the attorney general going back years ago where there was the relationships. And there are opinions applied to this district that deal with that. And to what degree do we vote on the budget, to what degree do we vote on health insurance? Where like when an immediate family member may get the benefits up there. And just to be careful with it, avoid it. So I kind of will advise you, but again, it's always up to you then whether you're going to want to take that vote or not because it's, at the end of the day, it's kind of your ethics decision.
Yeah, they suggest an extreme caution, extreme caution.
I, you probably know that from this board already, that's kind of where we've been with you guys, just to try to be cautious. Perfect.
Mr. Macy, just a clarification because I also know that sometimes this comes up as a point of concern, is that, you know, you were talking about the business partners and, and, you know, if, if it, if it will potentially benefit the board member, but that also goes for the immediate family members too, correct?
It can, it will, it, right, an immediate family member, yes.
Thank you.
It can. Same kind of thing. So is it going to impact you or your family directly? Those that are within the household, again, if we've got somebody that's living somewhere else altogether and not dependent on a family anymore, that kind of thing, it's a different scenario. There are some appearances of impropriety that go with that. And I've had board members just say, it's my son's business, they don't live with us, they're not dependent on us. Thank God they're not in the basement anymore, I'm not doing that. But I'm still not going to vote on it because it just doesn't look, but that's a personal choice, it's not directly. So where are we with all of those kind of things? If you're dealing with social media, you know, Mr. Pechal, back to your comment, things like that, you know, you kind of be careful where you weigh in. If you're doing the public's business and we're using that, err on the side of being cautious with these kind of things. As John said before, you avoid being into talking about agenda topics. You know what the board agenda's going to look like, you know what's going to be coming up, be careful with those kind of things. Just so I'm clear, that's different than informational things. One of the other districts up here, the superintendent would meet with two board members at a time before a board meeting. It's good that everybody does it different, okay? The board members didn't ask questions, they didn't give opinions about how they would vote on a thing, but they said, it might be helpful if we had a lot more information before the meeting. I'm not saying you do this or not, but that got challenged. You say, okay, that they did that. And the district attorney agreed that, no, it's just informational sharing. That's not getting to the point of discussing the topic or giving a conclusion or opinion on how you might vote on something, okay? Most of the rest is what we've talked about already. Always be careful if it's going to be the judicial kind of things. And, you know, if you're staying to announcements and general straightforward stuff, that's good. You certainly can always promote yourselves as politicians and promote your district. And there's nothing wrong with being politicians, okay? Just so we're clear about that too. Again, we just, be careful using the district logo too. But the district logo and some of the other stuff is protected property of the district. So be careful, work together as a group as to how you would do that. And outside groups ought not be doing that either. We've had students do different really creative, great musical things, but using the district's logos or the other stuff within it. And I kind of step back, look at and stand and be doing that kind of stuff. Most of it's innocent stuff and we'll talk about it with people that didn't intend anything with that. But just be careful of that kind of stuff. In official business, you got to work with the district in terms of how are you backing up your stuff for your other kind of thing, so. One of the districts, they just, they, everybody does it different and I'm not sure here. Some say, I'm just not going to use my personal phone or my personal email for any school district business. I'm going to use official school stuff and just keep it that way. Because I keep it clean, of course I keep it clean, but it's a personal choice. And then you got to do what's best for you, so we don't dictate it one way or the other. You as a board may decide you want to do that. But again, we're just trying to help you as to what to avoid, what to look out for. And you're going to get a lot more training, but from the legal side of stuff, that's kind of where we see things. And then open any other questions or other things that you have off the hook. And it works, believe me, it works well. And it's not to scare anybody either. Boards all over the place, it all works every day and we don't have major issues. And we haven't either here asked questions, it's not tonight or yet, haven't tonight, right? As we're going through, always talk to your administration on that, they get us and we get you.
Any questions for, for the gentleman?
I just have one. I, I talk occasionally with board members in other districts and I know sometimes they've raised the question about, we all will have, or we all do have Chromebooks. And the primary reason for that is because our agendas are there. And in the old days, we used to get printed versions of the entire, what they called the packet, everything that was on the agenda and all the supporting materials. What is, where does it fall under what you've covered tonight if, not here, but in some other district, two board members were to be emailing one another during a meeting about board business?
Yeah, see, technically you're not engaged in the public meeting. And you're kind of meeting outside of the public discussion because the theory is to let the public hear what you're talking about. Now, first of all, a meeting in public means people get to come and listen to you. That doesn't mean they get to participate with you, okay? Just so we're clear about that. So when people get to come and listen to you, if, if that board was emailing each other, people aren't getting to hear what that discussion is about. So that's technically a violation of the open meetings law because that's not a discussion in public. That's almost like a, a non-noticed closed session in a sense, if you think of it in that way. It could be, back to John's point, depending on the topic, depending on what's really going on with that. It's, we can't get these lawyers to be quiet, that's probably okay. That's probably not a violation. But if it was, this is what I think ought to be the board president from the earlier discussions, that's a serious, that's a much bigger problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Macy, could you also go over in the middle of a board meeting and then constituents are texting a particular board meeting member while a topic of concern is on the table?
Yeah, years ago, the city council, and Mr. Pechal wasn't on the city council at this time, but they were this time, but they were debating whether they were going to, years ago, they were going to put, well, the first high-rise office complex was down on the river. It was a really closed vote, and then city hall was just packed with people, and so it could have bated for quite a while, for those of you that remember. During the meeting, one of the council members emailed a group of people to say, I'm switching my vote on this. This is wall of discussions. And it was the difference between that project, which didn't get built at that time, and that didn't for years. But it was totally not appropriate. And again, it's not letting the public know the business or the rationale of small constituency. Yeah, that would be, that would not be good, that would be a problem, and was there. Anyway.
Any other questions for the gentleman? All right. One thing I want to say is, if you need some advice, I typically, if I have a question about something, I've had conversations with Jim, sometimes, many times, leading up to a meeting about where I lie in regards to a certain vote. As you know, I'm very diligent about making sure that I don't vote in areas that I shouldn't be voting in, and so I will always ask Jim for advice with that, and that's open to all of you as well, to doing that, so.
Let me suggest, and you had per- specific dialogue between your board president and your superintendent when you did that?
Yep.
Let me just suggest this to all of you. Legal fees are too, always too expensive, and again, being a taxpayer in your district, I know that and I watched that too, okay? Just so, the best way to keep a handle on that is that not everybody calls us over stuff. Centralize that through your board president or your superintendent, because the question you may have, three of you may have, and it's just more, much more cost effective. It doesn't mean I don't want to talk to you or answer your questions, I just want to be, we want to be really cost effective with it, and that's the, experience tells us in working with all the districts and municipalities, that's the best way. Your scenario, Bob, we had that connection.
Yep, it all started that way.
Right, right. So again, just, you'll get whatever you need, let's just centralize it so we keep that really cost effective, keep an eye on that, and do it.
And I do believe we may have board policy that speaks to that directly as well. Anytime that there is contact with legal counsel, it goes through the superintendent typically, or the board president and the superintendent.
Yeah. And if you have a hypothetical, because we're at some meeting somewhere and we're on the side, you're not going to get charged, and we're going to help get through some of that stuff. Again, I'm not talking about audible or other stuff, but if there, and I know a number, we're, you know, we're all over here, so don't feel you can't do that either.
Mr. Wright had a question?
Yeah, just by chance, well, I will read that board policy. I think it'd be helpful to know the proper procedure to go through to get clarification on things that there might be discrepancies with, so. So I'll read that, and then, from what I understand, if something comes up, we reach out to you, Bob, or Vicki, do you have a preference on who first?
I would prefer both.
Both?
Yep. I think I would prefer you to reach out to Dr. Cartwright first.
Okay.
And then you can reach out to me.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Peshal, it's on Board Policy 0172 related to the legal counsel. It says the board may employ or retain an attorney or attorneys to represent the school district or board in actions brought for or against the district and to render other legal services for the welfare of the school district. Authority to contact such counsel for legal advice or assistance on behalf of the district shall normally be that of the board president and superintendent unless otherwise specified by the board.
Awesome. And I don't know if this is the right time or place, but, and certainly tell me if it's not, but do you guys have a criteria that you use to determine if it needs to go to legal or not? Because I know as soon as we call you, the ticker starts, the price meter starts going up probably, was it, you know, so is there a criteria you guys use?
It depends on what it is, I got to tell you. I've had board members stop by my office on other matters that didn't build anything because it wasn't really a school board matter, so it depends on what it is. But your points will pay.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to be conservative.
What I would do is that, I think I would just follow the board policy and start with Dr. Cartwright, letting myself know, and you'll get guidance at that point of what direction.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
And just for note, there have been times in the past where board members will reach out with legal type questions for which I can serve for that without having to reach out to legal counsel.
Okay.
That is a part of my, for any superintendent, that is something that you would expect for them to know is about school law.
Okay, that's great to know, and thank you.
Liz, Ms. Lynn?
Yeah, I just was going to say, I know that when I had some questions, I also called WASB, which is Public Digital Training yesterday.
Yeah.
So that's another resource that is individual board members, if, because it was a scenario where I worried that if I reached out to the board president, it would create the walking quorum, because I worried that maybe another board member had already reached out to her. So that's another resource to use.
Okay, thank you.
They're good guys, they're folks, knowledgeable, they've been doing it for a while. They can give you advice, but they can't give you legal advice as a lot of them, just always a caution with that.
Yeah.
They'll tell you that, but just.
I didn't need legal advice, I needed board.
They're really.
Like policy kind of advice, yeah.
Bob, very, they're talented, good, knowledgeable people, and it's a great organization, fully support that group.
And oftentimes, and oftentimes, it's good to go ahead and reach out to your superintendent, because I don't, I'm not a part of the walking quorum kind of situation, and it also alerts me to, if I'm starting to see something that's coming out to that effect, to prevent a walking quorum situation from occurring. So I help protect the board as serving a superintendent to prevent some of these unknown actions.
Yes, that is also very correct.
I have a question. How does the walking quorum then apply to our committees where we have three board members serving on the committees we just reviewed, like policy and facilities and legislative and education?
To some degree, it's the same way. Again, if you have a small committee of three, and two of you decide what the committee's going to decide, and that's a decision of the committee, that can be a walking quorum. And people have said, well, no, but all we're going to do is recommend it to the full board. That's back to the other question we talked about, if that minority group is still effectively recommending to the board, and the board has a history of listening to their committees and not rubber stamping them, but puts a fair amount of weight, that's less than a quorum, that can be a walking quorum.
Thank you.
Is there any difference in the fact that a standing committee meeting is an open meeting? I mean, because many times a walking quorum, once you create the walking quorum, it's in essence, an open meeting, but this is, the committees are publicly noticed meeting.
I'm not sure I'm following, but walking quorum is the stuff that happens outside the meeting.
Sure.
Yeah.
See, and I'm trying to make that distinction, you know, even though there may be three people sitting on, you know, say, the policy and governance committee, they're making affirmative votes, affirmative or negative votes on whether to move something forward to the committee, that's an open and public meeting, and so a walking quorum wouldn't be in play there.
No, it's totally appropriate to have a notice board meeting because they have an agenda, they're meeting, that's okay. It's, it's, they can save.
Sure.
We got that meeting, how do you think, you know, or who are you going to vote for? I'm going to recommend someone sort of be board president, what do you think, and let's go, I don't know.
Sure.
Now we got a walking quorum. Is the stuff outside the meetings or outside the committee meeting or the meeting as a whole?
Okay.
That's what creates the walking quorum.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, obviously, it's our responsibility to know the rules and regulations of what we're supposed to do. Is there, does it ever come down to intent as well? So, my wife's a substitute teacher. Some of the decisions being made may affect her, I would have to step out of those votes. Let's say I missed it, voted by mistake, are we jumping on each other? Is there a level of, I'm sorry you caught me, I should have backed that out? You know, is there a level of intent that goes with that too, when you were trying to do something wrong?
It'll be looked at by the outside decision makers in the totality of what do we do about the situation? So it may be a violation, but it may not be, it may not void the vote, for example. One of the things that can happen is a court could say, that vote doesn't count, we're going back and doing stuff again. It can be a penalty that may apply or not apply, so it goes to what's the rationale, and it'll come into play a little bit with that. There are things that are going to happen, and it happens, and we inadvertently forget there's something like that. You got consent agendas, that a lot of stuff goes through, and if you check it, every little piece, something might get through, and you weren't intentionally trying to create, but the intent's got to be up more, it's tougher, right? When we're involved in that, you got to kind of.
I mean, I heard a few months back, you had pulled back the next meeting and says, hey, I shouldn't have voted on that one.
Yeah, it was.
Please strike that from the record or update it or whatever, right?
Basically, I was just acknowledging that I made a mistake and voted on that, and I didn't attempt to change any record because it would have been quite the process to undo a consent agenda just for me to not vote on one thing, so. And that was also going to be my comment, is first thing is to acknowledge that you, you know, you missed something, and to do it as publicly acknowledged that you made that mistake as quickly as possible, and I hope that the community is as forgiving as you hope that they are, so.
Yeah, let me emphasize, and you got to get more of this on the boardsmanship, I kind of what comes into that, say, are we going to kind of get on each other with that? It's not the way you said it, but it, I really, everybody come to the board with your own opinions and have good policy decisions, and if I can encourage, and somebody that goes to meetings all the time all over the state, you can have four or three votes on everything and be a really good, effective board, okay? The boards that are not effective make everything personal, and it gets, now look at different levels of government and the stuff going on, it doesn't take much to just see dysfunction. And I'm not talking politics, I'm just talking dysfunction, so I'm blaming everybody. The most effective government that I see, getting to work with all of them, is you folks, really. And you can disagree like crazy, just really be respectful and professional. It's okay to disagree and still be okay about that. It's really okay to have really strong opinions, but once you come to the majority, whatever it is, go with it, because that's what works, okay? Whether you agree or disagree. And if you could just, if I could, again, going back to years and the stuff of what's worked with boards and not, if you can just always come back to that, you are so far ahead and doing such a better job for your constituents. And that's the guy that gets sent in to deal with the really difficult four or three votes every night, and the bad language, and the really filing lawsuits against each other as board members, and restraining orders, and, yeah, that's not good. And you don't hear, okay? You haven't here, and I really encourage, we've had our history here, but I haven't seen that in a long time, and I encourage all of you, disagree like crazy, come to consensus, live with the consensus, stay in, we all stay in our lanes in policy, administration, you stay in your lanes administering, and we got half the battle done, okay? Now I know you're going to get another workshop on that, but as the guy defending later and doing the other side, you'll come up with really good stuff that way.
Any more questions? Gentlemen, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
It's really our pleasure. So we don't bill you for two attorneys, I didn't say that to start, we don't never do that. The two is when we just split our time, and it's, and even this, so thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next topic is a request for future agenda items. This is an opportunity for board members to suggest topics that they want to be readdressed or looked at. Many times, this may be a time where a board member may want to put a policy back to the policy and governance committee, and, or maybe want to talk about that at a separate time. In the past, we've seen, we saw a resolution that was brought up in support of Oshkosh Corp. and the work that they do in our community come up through this record. There's just lots of opportunities for that. All I would say is that, is that if you make that request, it's something that we would also still vet through staff in regards to timeliness and importance at the time, so.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Evans at the last meeting had talked about the equity group that we had met with, and I think I would just like to bring that to the table again and say that I think that would be beneficial to, or as a diversity group of people throughout the community, and I think it would be good to have a few of them come and share some information.
Dr. Cartwright, is that something that we could set up for, like a future workshop?
We could set that up for a future workshop, absolutely, in order to talk about with our Equity and Inclusion Committee. It is a formalized committee, we meet fairly regularly, about on a monthly basis, and Dr. Pinkston, as well as Linda and Dr. Brown, usually chair that committee with them in the work, and we'd be more than happy to provide an update.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
Marketing, plan to attract the students back that have left during the pandemic.
Okay. Is that something that, go ahead?
Certainly, so we start, we can have that as a standing update for you. We started doing that at the last board meeting, to where we had different executive team members coming up and talking about some of those strategies that we're including, and I apologize, it may not have been the last one, but I believe it was the one before that, where we provided updates on some of the strategies that we're doing in order to recruit our students back in. Dr. Grunlock, am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, we have, that topic would need to be discussed further because there's, we haven't done any core marketing, per se, we've done some survey, but that's different than advertising, because we've never done that as a school system, or at least not much. So we've sort of gotten some information, but we haven't done the actual marketing yet.
But we can definitely put that down as like a written report or a workshop.
Should.
Something soon.
We by chance have, I'm just throwing this out there, monthly updates on how many students are coming back or not, because it's my belief that the longer they're away, the harder it may be to transition them back in.
We can include that information for you.
Because I think it's urgent and pressing, so thank you.
So are you thinking like monthly enrollment numbers?
Yeah.
Like, because right now, we have enrollment for next year, right? One of the things I've learned as a board member, I'm just going to share this, is to ask for data instead of the ideas, because I think, I don't know, I don't want to speak for all of you, I think it's easier for administrative staff to collect data.
Yeah.
So I think that's a way to get, what you are both getting at is, what are the enrollment numbers, and then what's our plan? We would come up with a plan to market, like how are we going to try to get them back? Because I think you're right, the longer they're away, the harder it is.
I know.
Yeah.
I know, personally.
Sorry, I'm not trying to like take everyone's words, but that's just.
No, I think it's great. I mean, you got to have benchmarks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are we having training on Below the Line with Ted Nitski on Wednesday?
Yep.
Okay, so that's a great time to remind board members that every request we make leads to like, I don't even know how many, 20 different things, and pulling a lot of information and everything. So we will talk about that on Wednesday, I just wanted to point it out, thank you.
And then you guys will learn about the red tie that's on the wall too.
The red tie.
So thank you for those topics. Is there anything else? Then I'd like to, I have to ask a clarification. Am I asking for a motion to adjourn to executive session here? All right, so, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Excuse me, and then you would read the.
I got to read that first, okay. Executive session number one, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, state statute 19.85, parent one, parent C., Wisconsin statutes, and conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to be con- respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved, 19.85, parent one, parent G, Wisconsin State Statute, A, revealing pending personnel matters.
Second.
Carlin, and Carlin with the motion, Wright with the second. All right, please call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herta?
Aye.
Terrence?
Aye.
Peshal?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Adjourned to executive session.
All right.
I just have one thing. I need the new president, treasurer, and clerk before you head into the decision.
All right, sounds good. So we're all going to meet in about five minutes down the hall, it's called the IST Room. It's a smaller conference room.
I read the role of treasurer, but I-
Do you bring all of our stuff with us, or do you-